Good evening, everyone. This is the Monday, May 21st meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
(Inaudible) 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 Roll call of the members. Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky. Counselor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 7th, 2018.
So moved. Motion, Mrs. Fenrells?
All in favor?
All opposed?
So ordered. At this time, I'd like to take out calendar item eight, sorry, nine, the report of the Appointment Subcommittee.
Madam President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met, and we had the following items before us: Item 18-134, 18-139, 18-155, 18-167, 18-168, and 18-169. I ask, Madam President, that you hold 18-139 for further debate in the Appointment Subcommittee. At this particular time, I would ask that all of the above-mentioned numbers be appointed: Raphael, Appointment of Raphael Construction as a licensed drain layer, reapportment of Menino Construction as a licensed drain layer, reapportment of Tufts Construction as a licensed drain layer, appointment of Heatherby Legere to the Conservation Commission, and the reapportment of McGrath Enterprises as a licensed drain layer, and the appointment of Paul Argenzio as Superintendent of Public Works. I ask that you take these out and vote them all at one time.
Mr. Chairman, I just asked that we take out Menino as that was tabled.
Absolutely, I asked for that, yep.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Madam President, at this particular time, I'd like a picture session with the new Director of Public Works.
Absolutely, we'll take a two-minute recess. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we'll return to the regular order of business. Calendar item number three, public hearing.
What happened to my Subcommittee report?
We just, we went out of order for one thing, to do the appointments. We just returned to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $22,500,000 for a new Department of Public Works facility.
This time, we'll ask the Chairman of Ways and Means, and then we'll call proponents. Proponents first, so proponents. Any proponents wishing to speak on this? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents wishing to speak on this? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to councilors, and I'll open it up to the Chairman, Counselor Rizzo. Did you have any?
Thank you very much, Madam President. So earlier this evening, the City Council Subcommittee, along with other councilors not on the committee, met to discuss the loan order of $22.5 million for a new public works facility. There were and are a lot of questions. I know certainly I, as Chair of the Committee and as a member of the City Council, have questions. But to hold up the progress of a much-needed facility is not something that I want to do. So I agreed to vote favorably on the $22.5 million loan order, as was unanimously agreed with my colleagues on the Council who were present here this evening. There are some caveats, Madam President, that I think that we're gonna want to see happen along the way. For the edification of the public, edification of the Council, approving the loan order of $22.5 million does not mean we're spending $22.5 million. It just gives the city the ability to spend up to $22.5 million. That number seemed very high to me, close to $400 a square foot. Seemed way out of line. But that being said, I don't want to, and I think the City Council does not want to stand in the way of progress and stand in the way of a facility that's much needed. We will want to see architectural updates along the way. We're gonna want to use value engineering. We're gonna want to obviously make sure that building this facility, we're gonna be able to put some people in Revere to work. I know we used to have a residential monitoring committee. I'm not sure if that's still the case today, but obviously, I'd love to see some Revere residents go to work down there and building that facility. So that being said, it was unanimous vote, Madam President, to approve the loan order, and unless any other councilors have some words they'd like to offer, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the loan order in the amount of $22.5 million.
Any other councilors? I see Counselor Rotundo.
Motion to approve. Personally, to reflect Counselor Rizzo's comments, I would also prefer to see a clerk of the works that is at that particular site during that construction phase. More importantly, we do have a residency monitoring committee that we should, it should be in place and ensure that, you know, local labor is put to work. So if we can fold that into this afterwards, after we take the vote, that would be great.
Thank you, Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I certainly, Madam President, I'm sorry, I certainly am going to support this this evening. I think it's been, Councils of patience in the lay have been going on for year after year after year. We have men down there that want to go out there and do a good job, and I think it's so necessary that we give them the adequate facilities to do those jobs for the residents of this city and ourselves when we call down there. So I certainly will support this this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly support the building of a new public works facility, but as was said at the Ways and Means Committee, we approved the $22.5 million bond authorization, and I just want to let the taxpayers know that that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna spend the entire $22,000, $22,500,000. It could, it could come in considerably less than that with proper oversight. So that's where most of us felt, but we didn't want to hold this up because this is so long overdue. We're building this facility, but, so that's, that's where I'm at, and I'm thrilled that we're voting on this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This time, I'll ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $22,500,000 for the construction of a new Department of Public Works facility? Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to duplex dwellings.
Any proponents here this evening?
Good evening. Frank Strangie, City Planner. What you have before you is a zoning amendment that has basically three components. First component is to allow for duplex dwellings within the RB District. The RB District is our two-family district that the majority of the city encompasses. And right now, two families are allowed, side-by-side units with a potty wall, and we're facing issues by homeowners and contractors and builders that are building these homes with one single entrance. And it results in a building that's unattractive, it's like a block with two windows on the first floor, two windows on the second floor, and one entrance that comes in to a vestibule, and you go into another unit, another unit. Duplex dwellings allows for the same thing, allows for two units side-by-side, but it allows some creativity in the design of the building, and the Site Plan Review Committee would oversee the design and require a five-foot setback between each unit. So you'd have two principal, separate principal entrances that would create more flexibility in design and a more attractive building. The other one is construction in the 100-year floodplain. We're faced time and time again with builders that are constrained by the 100-year floodplain regulations, and they cannot go up three stories, especially if you have a garage underneath. A garage is considered a story, so the homeowner is basically getting gypped out of a story and a half of living area. So instead of setting the ZBA time after time again, this amendment would allow three stories in the RB District where there only exists a garage under. And the other amendment reflects heights. Right now, you have to have 8,000 square feet to go to 35 feet in the RB District. This ordinance would allow you to go 35 feet for all loss, more than 5,000 square feet. Again, that gives a better design of a building, it allows for a steeper pitched roof. We have these, design of these buildings nowadays that are low-sloped roofs as a result of this ordinance, result in ice dams, and the architecture is just not what we want to see. So these are very practical amendments that the Site Plan Review Committee is recommending. However, I'd like to make a note that in Section 5 to the City Clerk, this should only pertain to the RB District. There has been a typo that says RA in RB Districts, so RA should be stricken.
Why should it only be in the RB, not in the RA?
Pardon me?
Why should it not be in the RA as well?
The RA District has a height limit of 30 feet.
And in that particular ordinance, it says to change it to 35, correct?
It would change it to 35.
And that would be universal throughout the city at that point, correct?
It would.
Then that's what we should adopt.
Okay, then you'd have to change the height in the RA District and put that...
By doing that, we would, we would be doing that by virtue of maintaining the current ordinance as it is.
Counselor, we're still under proponents, and this will be going to committees so we can work out the details of the ordinance and committee's not being voted on this evening.
Very well.
Anything else?
Okay, that sums it up.
Perfect. Any other proponents here this evening? Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors, and this will be going to Subcommittee. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to have conformity with height in RA and RB for 35 feet. I think that's consistent. We, I believe, went backwards several years back when we did that amendment within the city. I think this is time to change that portion of our zoning. More importantly, as I reflect on what's going on within the Elections Department, actually, that was just right out our door earlier today, is an argument with constituents over having one door for a two-family versus two doors for a two-family, and the person was arguing, no, this is two separate properties. This will help eliminate that issue and give two separate designated addresses that would be consistent with the current endeavors of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Strangie, I have a question for you. If in fact, the RA District were included, that would permit, or would it not, 25 units to be constructed in the limited industrial district down on the Point of Pines?
No, this is concerning height.
Just the height, okay.
It has nothing to do with the number of units.
Okay.
Still, it's only a single-family hall.
Still 3,000 square feet, isn't it?
In the RA District.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be going to the Zoning Subcommittee.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on the application of St. Jean's Credit Union on behalf of 151 VFW Parkway LLC, a duly-formed Delaware Limited Liability Company with its usual place of business, care of Win Stanley Enterprises LLC, 150 Baker Avs, Suite 303 Concord, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to construct more than one principal non-residential structure on a single lot to enable the appellate to construct a 4,500-square-foot commercial structure at 171 VFW Parkway, Revere, Mass.
Any proponents here this evening?
Thank you, Council President. Counselors, Joseph Catojeo, One Sprague Street, Revere, representing the applicant, St. Jean's Credit Union. We all know that St. Jean's has proven itself to be a valuable asset to the City of Revere and its surrounding communities with its branch on Shirley Ave. It is excited about the opportunity to expand those services in a location that would be a lot more convenient, a lot more accessible, and allow them to provide an expanded financial services to the surrounding community. This location was first established, or first presented to the city with an initial concept plan to Site Plan Review. Site Plan directed us to the ZBA for parking, for stacking of cars, for the drive-through, and for this special permit application. We have completed the applications with the ZBA for both parking, number of parking spaces in total for the entire apostle, as well as the variance approval for the stacking of cars. This project has also been presented to the Revere Conservation Commission. It has issued an order of conditions favorably, all of which were acceptable. We have since returned to Site Plan Review with a much more comprehensive plan, which I have copies of here, as well as a detailed traffic study, water table flow and usage report, which I also have, that's available to the Council. And the last request that was made by Site Plan Review at the last meeting was from the Fire Department, which asked for a report on flushing and maintenance of the onsite sprinkler systems for the entire project. I've just received those, and I will be submitting those back to Site Plan Review. We have the President and CEO of St. Jean's here tonight. If you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer. Obviously, we're looking for a favorable response. All of our justifications and submissions are included in our application, and we'd be happy to review this with the Subcommittee as well.
Thank you, and this will be going to Subcommittee, but I will continue the public hearing with any other proponents. Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to any councilors, and again, this will be going to the Zoning Subcommittee for further review.
Madam President.
Counselor.
Just as a note, I have to recuse myself from all discussions regarding this application and any votes, whereas I am the clerk treasurer of St. Jean's Credit Union. So I'll be recusing myself from all discussions. Thank you.
So noted. This will be going to zoning. Thank you.
Calendar item number six, unfinished business. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor provide each counselor, and not a select few, the ability to attend meetings regarding traffic or development.
Counselor?
Thank you. I've been told over the past couple of months, actually, past year, that certain councils are getting invited to certain meetings, certain development meetings, and it's not being extended to other councilors. More importantly, if that's going to be the case, I believe that it should be just presented to the Council as a whole. I believe that type of selection isn't appropriate, and more importantly, I don't believe it lends itself well to the Council. Thank you.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Rizzo?
Yeah, I will say that I think since this issue was first brought up, I believe by Counsel Rotundo, and actually, when we talked about traffic flows on Revere Beach and so on, that, you know, some councilors were able to weigh in on it and others weren't. There have been at least one meeting that I'm aware of. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend when they planned it, but there was one meeting where I believe they did send out an invitation. But again, it's coming down to information that's being shared with the City Council. I had submitted a motion that talked about issues like this a while back, following up on some motions that hadn't been responded to, and got a bunch of information back, none of which answered questions that I had. So I think we still have a continuing problem of getting information that this City Council needs. We are very much part of the process, and we should be treated as such. Thank you very much, Madam President.
So noted. Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. As we know, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met this evening before this Council meeting. We had, well, listed as two items, but we actually had three items to take up. The first one was the numbering of houses, which a lot of information was disseminated there, not enough yet, and we're gonna...
Keep it in committee?
Continue, we're gonna keep that in committee and try to solve what looks like a bigger problem than anybody anticipated. So that'll stay in committee. The other two items are an ordinance relative to departmental revolving funds, which was voted out favorably, and I'll ask for a vote, as I will, for the parity salary ordinance, which was also voted out favorably. So I'll be looking for a roll call vote on each of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We'll start by taking up the, let me see, departmental funds, and I'll order this to a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance relative to departmental revolving funds? Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained.
Next, we'll take up calendar item number nine. We'll order this to a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve the parity salary ordinance for Section J with the Revere revised ordinances? Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers.
Present.
Present. Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained.
We already took up the Appointment Subcommittee under suspension, so at this time, we will go to Communications.
Calendar item number 13, communication from James DiPaolo, 849 Revere Beach Parkway, requesting time to discuss a rat problem near his home.
Is Mr. DiPaolo here? No? Place on file.
Motions, calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that HYM, the City of Revere, and the various building trades unions enter into a PLA or MOU for the development of Suffolk Downs.
So Counselor Rotundo, seeing as you have four motions on the agenda this evening, we won't take up the other one, which three would you like to speak on?
Sure, I would like to speak on 17, 20, and 21, and I believe Counselor Rizzo will be taking up 18 from me. Yep.
I think you guys are looking at an older version.
I'm gonna grab one again to see if they can come in here. I have a feeling they're gonna want to be in here for one of those motions.
All right, so Counselor Rotundo's...
Speaks for itself.
17 speaks for itself? That was brief. Anyone else on Counsel Rotundo's motion regarding HYM? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item 19.
Madam President.
18, sorry.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor provide the City Council with a copy of the audit performed in 2017. The audit cost the taxpayer $72,000, and the results should be made public.
Counselor Rizzo, I believe, is taking this up for Counsel Rotundo, so we'll open it up to Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would say the motion speaks for itself.
Point of information, I think we have a different calendar of items on, ours are, our agenda items are numbered differently than what you have.
The one item that was different was the Legislative Affairs Committee Report. Council Order 18-22 was added regarding the property address assignments.
They'll all shift down a number, but they're in the same order. So we're on Order 18-171, if that is any clarification. 18-171, so from there, move down whatever your number is on. Counselor?
Motion speaks for itself. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak on it. Motion speaks for itself, as far as I'm concerned.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. This is crazy. I don't know why I don't have this. I've been asking for it for well over a year. What's the mystery behind it? I was told that there was some major, major issues within the city, that we needed this audit, that this audit was tantamount to, I don't know, Rice Krispies as far as I'm concerned. I'm still waiting to hear the snap, crack, or pop, but this was an issue that I asked that we have the state auditor involved, that we asked that they do the audit of the city, because there was questions of malfeasance. And I just want to know, with all the rumors and innuendo that was made during that period, where's the beef? So I want my study, I want my audit. I paid for it, and I damn well better get it. I don't feel like going to court to ask for it again, but if I have to, I guess I'll end up having to take the city to court for another public record. Talk about transparency.
Any other councilors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, this is Council Order 18-172, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso, that the mayor requests JBX developers to appear before the City Council to discuss any changes to the plans that were presented to the City Council in order to receive a special permit for the construction of a hotel at 49-54 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Madam President?
Sorry, we're still explaining the numbers to our colleagues. Counselor Guanasso.
Madam President, I've been hearing conversation from different folks about what's going on at that location. There doesn't appear to be any communications ongoing, it doesn't seem like any permits were sought. And when the conversation was before us and the public hearing was held, we all gave high praise for this particular developer to come in and be the catalyst of Revere Beach with this new hotel, and lo and behold, now, we don't hear from anybody from there. And I'm hearing stories that I'm not, I don't have firsthand knowledge on, but I hear conversations that it's not that they have a new developer, that they have a new... Everything's new. And so if that's the case, and if it's just not a rumor, then we have to have them before us to discuss what's taking place there, and I'd like to see them appear at our next regular meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Great motion, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo.
This is definitely an issue, in fact, author, to echo some of your concerns. During that period, I had asked them who their equity partner was, who was going to do the development, and in fact, part of the reason why I had voted for this special permit was based on those very issues. Now, those same rumors that you're hearing, I'm hearing as well, but this is something that the mayor and the Economic Development Department should be, you know, a foot on. They should be the one finding out what's going on with this development. development. It's supposed to be a hotel down there. And this is, the development that the mayor actually came up and supported. And so this is, this is something that I wanna find out what's going on. I'm sure the mayor has an idea of what's going on. If he doesn't, I'm sure he'd be the person to get these developers before us and find out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I think everybody remembers that I had the most reservations of anybody about this group, because I didn't feel they had enough experience. I was assured that because of their property in New York and the project they did there, and all this money from China and all this, and they were self-contained, and all this good stuff, as far as, I was still not completely comfortable, but in the end, I was convinced that even if we permitted this, someone would buy this and build a hotel. And I don't know if that's where we're at, but I understand from the little investigation I've done, that someone named Jeff and Blair, Blair is the daughter, I think, who's taken over the project, should be included if my colleague would let me amend his motion, to include those people.
Through the chair, Madam President, I'm, well, I want whoever is responsible for this development to appear before us. And if they're going to abandon the project, then we ought to know. And this motion, by the way, has to be approved by the mayor, so the mayor will be informed of it. And if he has any input in it, he will also add that to it. But I want them to appear before us to get firsthand knowledge, rather than me hearing it from somebody else, what's taking place.
Great. So if we can just add Jeff and Blair to that motion, it may help us. That's, that's the names that I got through my little investigation. So they're supposedly the key players. So let's see what happens when they come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak on this?
If I may briefly speak from the chair, I think this is a great motion on behalf of Counselor Guanasso. And if anything, I hope that it isn't what it seems to be, but it seems that it is. Perhaps it's something we can look into as a council, we could discuss with the city solicitors, what conditions can we put on a special permit, such as if the property is flipped, or if there's a new owner or a new party involved, that we would have the power to revoke that special permit, because I think that's a huge catch. So great due diligence on behalf of the board. Three, Counselor?
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, this is Council Order Number 18-173, Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor requests the fire chief to appear before the city council to discuss standards of care.
Counselor Rotundo?
I'll save my comments for when the chief comes, or more importantly, anybody else for that matter. I think that, quite frankly, we need to have a standard of care to protect the department, and more importantly, to ensure a higher level of care for our constituency. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, this is Council Order 18-174, Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor requests the fire chief to have an ambulance stationed at the Point of Pines Fire Station as soon as possible.
Counselor?
Thank you. With the upcoming summer season and increased population down the beach, more importantly, down at the Point of Pines, I think it's probably the safest thing to do is to station at least one or two ambulances within the area. I know recently, there was a question of time to get to a person down at, God bless you, the Point of Pines Yacht Club, in which there was a question of about 15 minutes as to when this person was seen. And that's a very, very long time. In particular, since there was no traffic and the time of day, there shouldn't have been an issue with getting there. That said, more importantly, has been brought to the council's attention, to be quite honest with you, we can't put a ladder truck down there. They're talking about possibly putting a pump truck down there. But in the meantime, I think at the very least, we should have an ambulance down there. And quite frankly, when we do have a pump truck down there, we should also have an ambulance down there as well, because currently, we don't have an ambulance service. And quite frankly, the fire department cannot transport people, which is the biggest issue. So, and that'll be a discussion for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm familiar with the incident at the Point of Pines Yacht Club, because I got a call from people involved. And they also told me that it was 15 minutes for an engine to respond. And I felt that was way out of line, as far as I was concerned. And I did some checking with the fire department, and the, the information they gave me was that the call came in around, in the seven to eight o'clock timeframe, that they left Freeman Street, Engine Five. The response time from Freeman Street to the Point of Pines Yacht Club was five, six minutes, according to their records. And 10 minutes after that, they cleared the Point of Pines Yacht Club. That's my understanding. So that's all I have to go on. But I think if six minutes, there was a pretty good rundown there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other counselors? No? There's some people in the audience. Former counselor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. John Accarigio, 30 grades, rode Revere, retired fire lieutenant, 32 years with the fire department. It's imperative that you have a pump down there, not so much an ambulance. The pump is very, very important, because if you have a house fire, the pump is there to put water and attack the fire. You have an ambulance there, and you have a house fire in the Pines area, you really can't do much with it. The first priority is to have a pump there with three firefighters year-round, because now with the building you have on Revere Beach Boulevard, it's all wooden, wooden structures, and it could catch fire fast. They're large buildings. It's getting more heavily populated down there. So it's important that you open the fire station. What Boston is doing, they're rebuilding all their old fire stations and getting new apparatus for the city of Boston. Marty Walsh is doing that. So either we put a new building there, or we refurbish the building. But you need to get a pump there as soon as possible, because now the summer is coming, and you're gonna have a lot of traffic, more traffic than ever. Then you got the sandcastles coming. So it's important that we address the problem. Get the pump there, open the station, and let's protect the people in the Pines area. Thank you very much.
Sure. I think-
Counselor Accarigio?
Yes.
I got a question for you. Do you think that we need a ladder truck down the beach as well?
On the Boulevard, you can put Engine Five and a ladder truck in the Ocean Avenue area on the Boulevard, because now you have more high-rise. And I think what you would use, instead of another ladder truck, you would use a tower unit. You'll have two ladder trucks and a tower unit, and you'll have two ladder truck response to all those high-rises. So I would put a new fire station, close Engine Five, and have a ladder and a pump either on the Boulevard or Ocean Avenue. That's the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Any other people wishing to speak before I open it back up to the council?
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just wanna clarify a few points of information. I'm not speaking for or against this motion. I just wanna share what happened at the yacht club that night. I was in attendance. There was an elderly gentleman. He fainted due to low blood pressure and dehydration. The response time from Revere Police and the fire was fantastic. However, when they get there, to Counselor Rotundo's point, they couldn't transport the victim. There was no way to move him. So he's literally laying on the floor. The police are there, the fire's there, and no one can do anything. So we need something down there. We need some faster response time. Thank you.
Madam President, that's the issue right there. Tell me the last time we had a major fire in Revere. Once, twice, maybe three times a year? I can guarantee you that the medical calls that we have in the city are exponentially higher than the fires that we have by a thousand.
Oh.
By a thousand. And when that person, who I know personally, who ended up going to the Mass General, who had a hot condition, minutes is the difference between life and death. And he's very lucky that he didn't have, and by the way, Eric, you were one of the people that actually helped him, and I wanna give you some credit for that, and thank you. But at the end of the day, you need to ensure that you have the ability to transport. That's part of the reason why I want an ambulance service run by the fire department. And I've had resistance by that in the past from the union. And you know what? We're losing millions of dollars by not having an ambulance service in the city of Revere. They do it in other communities. It works well. They actually have a return. But more importantly, the greater return is that the constituents are getting a higher level of care. They're not waiting that extra five minutes for the ambulance to come by. They're not waiting for that extra five minutes for the transport of that patient. Because when you have low blood pressure, when you're not breathing, that's the difference between anoxia and losing a vital organ, or for that matter, your life. And there is no joke with that. And I know there's some members of this council that know more about that than I care to share. So at the very least, no matter how good we have it right now, we can always make it better. Thank you.
Counselor Powers, did you have a final thought?
I just have a point of information. I have spoken to the chief regarding this, and that building right now is in deplorable condition. I don't think it would be wise to put an ambulance in there. If they could arrange to have an ambulance standing by outside the building, with limited access for the attendees to go into the building, that would be fine. As far as fires, we had two fires at 500 Revere Beach Boulevard within the past five years, and they were substantial fires, too. One fire was so bad that they required them to put a sprinkler system in there, which the fire, to get them to do that, the fire has to be, the fire has to be very severe. Okay? And as far as a ladder truck down there, I certainly think, down the road, with all of this new development coming into the city, and the resources from this development, the funding, we certainly would be capable to put a ladder truck down there. That's number one. And number two, when you're building a fire station today, you have to have enough room on that second floor, which they would have, to put women's facilities in there. Otherwise, you're gonna find yourself in the middle of a lawsuit, because you could at some point have a couple of women working a shift down there, and you can't put them in with the men, for sure. Otherwise, you're gonna wind up in a serious problem. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors?
If I may, very briefly, give my two cents on this from the chair. This has come up before, since I've been on the council, and we did discuss it. I have my reservations. I think there's no doubt that with everything going on down the beach, we need more support in terms of a pump and a ladder and those types of facilities. But this was specific to an ambulance. And I remember the last time this came up, some things that we spoke with Chief Doherty about were liability and some other issues. If we go years back, Revere did have ambulances. I'm going back to like, I believe, like, the 60s. So it was something that we did have. So I think that there's definitely more that we can look into. But I just have some more questions, I guess.
Madam President, if I may, thank you. I don't know what happened that night, as far as Cataldo getting over there. We don't know the circumstances. I know Cataldo has been to my house numerous times, and they've always been there within two or three minutes after the first responders. And I remember several times, they were there before the first responders. Now, I know it depends where they are at a particular moment and what, but, you know, I don't know if it's really necessary to station one there, or at least nearby. I know the building itself is bad, and I wouldn't even put one outside, because the way the, you know, the bricks could fall over. But I think maybe in the, I don't, like I said, I don't know. But usually, if there's a problem, they'll call somebody in from Lynn to cover the Pines area. So I question, I do have reservations on actually stationing an ambulance at that location. Thank you.
So noted. Counselor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's, I think it's, it's worthy of asking the question, but my only curiosity is, you know, and I'm thinking of the Pines, obviously, and you wanna have coverage there. But if we have Cataldo, which is on Route 60, it's closer to the Pines than it would be to the corner of Ward 4 up on Reservoir Ave or up on Suffolk Ave. So I mean, at what point do you say that we need to have, we would have to have one stationed in every corner of the city?
Yeah.
And again, I totally agree. You know, you wanna, you have something, you have someone with the problem, you know, seconds matter. And I know Counselor Rotundo knows that firsthand, being in the field. But it just, it's, at what point does that extend to that? And that's my only curiosity. But the Pines, I mean, we all know the Pines need a fire station. We all know the Pines need fire coverage. And I know that the city all agrees on that. I think every council totally agrees that there needs to be a pump, there needs to be a renovated fire station, or a new fire station, and fully serviced, fully serviced staff there. But as far as the ambulance service, unless we were to get into the city, the business of being in an ambulance service, how could you say only one section of the city would have a stationed ambulance?
Point of information.
State your point, Counselor.
I believe that currently, and I'm sure that they, the fire department can correct me, that we have five ambulances, I think, dedicated to the city. And more importantly, that you have, I believe, Winthrop, Chelsea, Lynn, that have ambulance service provided by Cataldo as well. And generally, what happens, in my experience, having worked for them in the past, is that when they need to get an ambulance, it's usually they draw from the closest community that doesn't have a need at that moment, and backfill accordingly. So at any one moment, you can have as many as seven ambulances in the city, to as little as three, because they're either in town dropping people off or what have you.
All right. Thank you, counselors. This will be going to Public Safety.
Calendar item number 22, Council Order 18-175, Motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request the DPW to repair two sections of guardrail directly across from 63 Mills Ave.
So Counselor Powers and I did speak about these before the meeting, and, because typically, motions of these natures do go to the 311. But it was brought to my attention that these issues were not addressed, so Counselor Powers is bringing them before the council. Counselor?
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. They were partially addressed, but I think this could fall into the category of unfinished business. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, this is Council Order 18-176, Motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request the DPW to repair the sinking sidewalk in Catch Basin directly across from 25 Wadley Ave.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you. And there, this has been supplied before the information. It's still, there's also a drainage problem on Wadley Avenue, and I'd like to see that addressed, and this can go to unfinished business also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I'd just like to say, during the flooding that we had earlier this year, I wouldn't doubt that all the Catch Basins along Mills Avenue and along adjacent side streets have issues. When we flooded, the weight of that water deteriorated what's underneath. So we saw this happen on John Avenue, and now we're seeing it on Wadley. Is it possible for the city to do an inspection of each one all the way up?
I'm sure it's something that we could definitely look into.
Yeah, that's something, that's something that can happen. We had this happen probably a dozen years ago on Gilbert Avenue, and the, those drains go right out to the beach. But unfortunately, they're buried, and it's very difficult to get at them. So what I've requested is that they go in there and go out and televise those drains as far out as they can, and find out what the obstructions are. And that would solve the problem. Also, there's a piece of roadway that's been seriously undermined down there, and I had them get on and put some cones down there the other day. And the way to resolve that, I guess, is that part of that roadway's gonna be, have to cut out, be cut out, and the back of it near the river backed up. There's, you're very limited in what you can do because of the Army Corps of Engineers and DEP. You can't really do what you'd like to do. Thank you.
As an ECE, I know that area is under a lot of concern. Further down Mills Avenue, they actually put Jersey barriers to prevent some of that asphalt from eroding into the river. So maybe that's a possibility all the way up. Thanks.
So noted. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. There's no further business, but before we adjourn, I just have a couple of points of information that I'd like to make. First, I was remiss in mentioning my colleague, Counselor Patch, is under the weather and was not able to be here this evening. However, he did want to express his support for Paul Argenzio for that position, and I was remiss in mentioning that earlier. So I wanna put that on the record, that Counselor Patch is definitely in support of that, for a longtime friend and colleague. Second, I wanted to make note of our Memorial Day services. So Monday, the 28th, the City of Revere will be holding a- So Monday, the 28th, the City of Revere will be holding its annual commencement at 11:00 a.m. in front of the Legion on the lawn. So we want to take a moment to make note of that and pay respect to all of those that made the ultimate sacrifice at this Memorial Day. Second, I'd also like to note that there is a road race happening on June 2nd, and this will start at 8:00 a.m. at the West Revere School complex. Any other counselors have any points or notes? Seeing as there is none, this council will be adjourned until June 4th. Thank you all, and have a great evening.